Welcome to the Thurston County Board of County Commissioners Boardwork Sessions. It's Friday, December 3rd, 2021. It's 9:03 a.m. My name is Ty Mensah, Chair of the Board. To my right is Commissioner Carolina Mejia. To her right is Assistant County Manager Robin Campbell. To my left is the County Manager Romero Chavez. And we have Commissioner and Vice Chair Gary Edwards through Zoom, as well as our Director of Public Health and Social Services Shelley Slaughter and Tom Webster from our Housing Team over at Public Health. So, the topic this morning is just a, is a follow-up to a public hearing that the Board held on November 23rd regarding the concept of a countywide home fund. And we didn't have debate at the end of that meeting. We're just kind of here to, I guess, discuss next steps or whatever the Board wants to discuss, frankly. I'll let the County Manager maybe take up the discussion.
Thank you, Commissioners. Good morning. You will hear today from the staff just a little bit of an overview of the comments they, they would receive both in writing and during the public hearing related to this proposal. Also, at the end of the, of the meeting, you asked a motion for me to prepare a draft ordinance. I have done this. This ordinance has not gone through legal review. And I like to stress the fact it's a very draft ordinance. And as I stated on Tuesday, I will, I will do my best to bring this ordinance to meet the intent of the motion that you passed. Here it is. So, again, there's a lot of work that needs to be done in this ordinance. And this is, I believe, our first attempt as to how you can start working on that if that is the direction. At some point, I would like to probably, the Board has two options on this, or maybe three. The always, the do-nothing option is always available to the Board and the process will start here today. Or the next option, if the Board is intended to go with implementing a home fund in Thurston County, then I will ask the Board to provide the direction whether you'd like to go with the voters' approval type of approach or consumatic. When you passed our motion for me to draft this ordinance, I clarified if the ordinance was intended to be consumatic. So this ordinance is intended based on the motion that you passed. If, if there is desire to move forward again, I will ask the Board to provide that direction on the two approaches. I do not expect today, if, if in fact it was a certain direction, for you to approve legislative action of this. That's not the intent. It's just to begin the conversation as, as directed by.
So you said.
At this point, Tom is going to just briefly walk us through. And Jones here as well. Good morning, both.
Good morning, Commissioners. Good morning, Romero. So, yeah, just to briefly, to summarize some of the, the public comment we have received. So I have been tracking the, the written comments that have been submitted in response to this issue. So as I reported during the public hearing, prior to the public hearing, we had received 85 public comments. Of those, 83 were in support and two were opposed to a countywide home fund. Since the public hearing, we've received 15 additional comments. Of those, 13 were in favor and two were opposed. So that's a total of, of 96 in favor and four opposed that have received. That includes a letter we received just a couple of days from the City of Tumwater. We also received the city from, a letter from the City of Lacey the day of the public hearing. Several of those also are, are letters from organizations that's, that indicated their support. And I think I listed those organizations during the, the public hearing. So that's a summary of the, of the public comments, the written public comment that we've received so far. Happy to answer any questions on that regard.
I do have a question. Go ahead. Tom, about a week ago, I asked if you could bring forward some stories of what success looks like.
Yeah, and so I did forward, I don't know if it's in your packet material, so what? I looked on the Community Solutions, the Built for Zero website, which is a national technical assistance provider that is working in communities throughout the country and that we've recently signed up with. And they've had some, some success, success stories. So I forwarded kind of two case sam- case samples or case studies. They have one from Bakersfield, California, and one from Rockford, Illinois, where they have achieved essentially what they call functional zero for chronically homeless populations and kind of an example of how they've done that. So if you didn't receive that, I can forward that to you again. But those were, I thought, two relevant examples showing that the Community Solutions approach that we're just embarking on now and how that's been successful in other communities.
I, I think those other examples that you referred to had accountability issues in there. Are we going to cover all of those in our ordinance as far as you know? Holding people accountable for certain actions and their own personal actions?
Um, so I, you know, the ordinance is a draft ordinance at this point. So there certainly, there's room to kind of address, you know, how we want to, how we want to do that. So a lot of the work for this Community Solutions is really around a concentrated effort to do case management and really focused on getting people into housing and solving issues that are unique to each individual and solving kind of their specific circumstances to get into housing. I guess I defer on kind of the level of accountability that's required for, for those programs. It's, it's very much a low barrier, working with people where they're at and solving their individual issues and really kind of a focused effort, all hands on deck efforts to address each individual's challenges. I don't know, Shelley, if you have anything to.
Any mandated treatment issues for substance abuse or mental health issues?
Uh, no, generally not. Those are not mandated. Best practice shows that mandating people to go into treatment generally is less successful than if people kind of are ready to, to move into treatment and, and are more successful if they're, if they're ready versus being mandated to go into treatment. It's kind of my understanding of the research and best practices.
Okay. I guess if, if we had mandates and those people didn't want to participate, they'd probably go elsewhere, I guess, is the best way I can see it. If we, if we had mandates that we were willing to enforce and people are not interested in bettering their situation in life and participating, then they would go elsewhere. That also would bring quite a solution to that particular problem. So, you know, we have a difference in philosophy and that's fine. And I, I understand that your heart is in the right place, sir. That's it, sir.
Okay.
So any, any additional questions for Tom related to the public testimony that you received? And continue to receive. Just this morning, we received additional comments. So I believe that's what probably Tom's stating there. Additional comments were received.
By email?
Yeah, by email, on the County's Commissioners' email. So if there is no additional questions on this, you know, I, I provided this, let me reemphasize, very draft ordinance. It has not gone through legal review yet. Then again, this is in response to the motion that you passed at the end of the public hearing. This resolution, this ordinance outlines a, to a level, the path for the Board to implement a consumatic one-tenth of one percent of the home fund.
What was the amount again?
One-tenth of one percent.
Okay.
And also on this outlines some of the conditions of as to how the money should be utilized. Also, in this draft ordinance includes excluding the City of Olympia because the City of Olympia has already passed their own home fund back in 2000, was implemented in 2018 through a voters' approval process and a special election. It does not have any other exclusions of any other jurisdictions. So as, as we move forward, that is the desire of the Board to move forward with this effort. I would like to ask the Board what path you want to go if this is a desire of the Board to take the next steps. And the next steps will be to draft either ordinance, whichever path the Board asks me to do. And that will probably begin sometime in January. I don't see the Board, I would be in the position to bring a legal review and have a good ordinance for your consideration before the end of the year. That will be unrealistic. I think it is time to take the process through. And it will require a few reviews, just to make sure that we cross all the Ts and that all the Is. And also, it requires also making sure that we understand how we're going to be working with the cities if that is the case on one path. Okay? So what I would like to.
Go ahead.
No, no, no.
I got you. I saw you.
No.
Go ahead. I don't want to interrupt.
So the first question that I have with the Board is a twofold. Is the Board wants to take the next steps on the, in implementing a home fund? If that is the case, then what path the Board wants to take? Consumatic or going through the voters?
A question. So if this ordinance were to be brought in January, I mean, when would it go into effect? Would it go through with the Department of Revenue when we would?
I recall, I mean, I could have gone wrong. I think it's administrative process they need to go through. They need to file to the Department of Revenue. And I think it's sort of a waiting period. I need to check on that. So the closest probably, when the revenues can be coming will be maybe July. And that is probably the sense that I have. But, but again, we'll double check on that, please, on, on having investigated that.
It's only, it's like a 90-day notice.
I've been told that they would have, in order to collect, it's like quarterly. And in order to collect April 1st, they would have to have all of the filing of everything by January 15th. If you miss that, then you're looking at July 1st, you know, based on the next 90-day window. I don't know if that.
I didn't think that it was on a quarter basis. I thought it was just a, a 90-day. There's a lead period that you would notice. And then sales taxes collected on two-month lag. So you could expect to see the money start to come in the door approximately five to six months after you adopt the ordinance.
But it would, you're saying it, it doesn't have to be April 1st or July 1st. It could be May 1st, June 1st.
Didn't think it, but do let me follow up on that. We'll give the details on that.
It's a pretty important piece of the timing, sir.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll bring that information to you in more.
But it is like five to six months.
If I, perhaps before we kind of dive into that, you know, big question, if I could just maybe share some of the information I've received from, it might bear on, I mean, it's kind of detailed. It's kind of assuming we were going to go forward, but it might bear on my seatmates' feeling or position about whether we should. We've got, you know, obviously, we've got a supportive letter from Tumwater and Olympia. And I think those were unanimous, oh, to their council. We had a letter from Lacey expressing not opposition, but some concern, questions and timing question. So I wanted to, so I've had some conversations with folks from Olympia as well as Lacey. My attempt was to try to figure out on the Olympia side, they've continued, I've heard their officials multiple times say, we would want to pool this, kind of the way we did with 1406. We would want to pool the money. I wanted to know what, you know, how would that work? What, what does that mean? Could that be done? You know? And so my, we had, there was a meeting yesterday where we discussed possibilities. And my understanding was that the City Manager is going to be proposing a, a letter of intent.
I, I believe his commitment was he was going to bring a resolution of intent for the, for the City Council to outline the, the intent that if, if the county passes a home fund, they're committed to working on the local agreement with the county to make sure all their funds are, this is managed at the regional level.
And for example, their community advisory committee, we could expand to a countywide advisory committee and add, you know, elements to that.
Aligned with the Regional Housing Council.
Right. And then, and then the regional, and then, and then that's pivoting to the City of Lacey. Their concerns were not about the, and I was speaking to the mayor, but he'd been working with his council and city manager. So they'd had multiple work sessions on this. Their concern was not as much about the need for the revenue or the appropriateness of the revenue. They were more interested in the structure of how the decision-making about the allocation of the revenue would be structured. Having it go through the Regional Housing Council with an up or down vote for the Commissioners made, was satisfactory to, to, to them, according to the mayor. And that was his kind of request of how we might think to structure decision-making. Which I again, ran that idea by the folks at Olympia who thought that was fine, as long as there was an advisory committee connected to it. So an advisory committee going to the Regional Housing Council, coming ultimately to the Board and the City of, and of course Olympia's City Council, but on an up or down. These are details, but I just wanted to share this because, for example, I, going into this whole concept, I've been, I've been leaning toward thinking it was a, it was a good idea. But I absolutely wanted to make sure that the City of Lacey was, was, concerns were addressed and that there were, that we would be partners with them on, on how this would unfold. I didn't want to, to take this action with the idea that Lacey was saying, no, don't do this. You know, we don't, we don't, we don't want this. We don't support this. We can't support this. That would be difficult from my perspective. So I just wanted to share that because I don't know where everybody else is. But I think we can, I guess what I'm getting at is, I feel very confident based on my discussions that we can get to an agreement with Olympia that would pool the money for maximum regional impact to basically create a countywide home fund, a true countywide home fund through an agreement. And number two, that we can work out an arrangement that's, that Lacey would support in terms of how we handle decision-making.
Along the same lines, I did have a conversation with the City Manager from Lacey along the same lines. And I believe some of the concerns is how the administrative side of, of the home fund will be implemented. And, and certainly, if that is the, the intent, it will be an option to really create a program manager because right now, Tom and his staff are helping and supporting the Regional Housing Council. It has a lot of funding decision-making costs. If this comes as part of their workload, I don't think Tom can, can manage that. So we need to find a structure as to how the, the administrative side is, is to work. And I think that was probably one of the concerns that Scott Spence highlighted to me. And I think there's opportunities if the Board wants to go in that direction to make sure that we add it on that legislative action.
So the Mayor mentioned the same thing. He'd like to see the, you know, capacity and independence of the art to see a little bit more than what, how we've been there, which is reasonable. Anyway, with all that, that extra information, I guess. Comments about the.
Commissioner, what's got?
Oh, sorry.
I guess, I guess I'll, I'll ask the County Manager, but this new tax that we're contemplating now was authorized by the Legislature. And we are allowed to do councilmatic, which is the three of us as the legislating body for the county, to make that decision for, I'll just say, 300,000 citizens. So we have the option of we can make the decision or we can put it on the ballot and the voters can make the decision. That's the way this is set up. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's on the, in 2019, prior to 2019, the home fund and availability of the one-tenth of one percent was available to all jurisdictions. And, and the context of the, of that law has not really changed since. There was a little variations for an addition, from an additional bill they put a little more details. But what happened in 2019, a bill was introduced, it was passed by the Legislature, amended the appropriate R C W, they gives the consumatic option. And that is, you know, prior to 2019, that's how City of Olympia exercised their voter approval process because they did not have any option of consumatic legislative action. So here we are. And I think the, you hear the Pierce County pass a home fund yesterday, Tom? That's what I've heard in the news.
Um, I did not hear that, but I know the City of Tacoma did. I'm not, I don't know about Pierce County.
And also is Nohomish Counties in the process of, the same process that you're going through right now, assessing and evaluating this option? So yes, so it is the, is the two options.
Yeah. And I guess in, in my review of the legislation, I didn't see anything in there that there was any sunset clause. So in other words, if we put this in place, it's good forever, as far as whatever forever is, you know, I don't know. And I guess therein lies my problem is we can put certain criteria into the ordinance. But for me, when we're talking about a tax involving, you know, I'll say hundreds of millions of dollars, I don't know, I think it'll be around four or five million from the county side of things, minus whatever Olympia's getting. That's a lot of money. And I think that we have diverse opinion amongst the total of 300,000 citizens in Thurston County. And because of that, I think with the magnitude of this tax and the potential, we should put this in front of the voters at the next election cycle. So that's kind of why I'm where I am. I mean, I could get into all the particulars of accountability and making sure we're helping the right people, not encouraging folks to come from all around the United States to take advantage of the goodwill of our citizens. So there's a lot that could play into it. And for that reason, I prefer putting this in front of the voters because it's going to go on forever. It's a lot of money. It's a big challenge. And I think we can meet that challenge if we see the voters are behind us. Anytime we take something to that magnitude on by ourselves, then there's always going to be, well, I didn't vote for that, you know, as, as somebody disagrees. Where when the public votes for something, that gives it a completely different outlook. And so that's, that's why I am where I am today, sir.
Fair enough. So you're in favor of going forward, but through the, through the.
Through the, putting it on, on the ballot. Yes, sir.
Um, so I wanted to kind of see, and thank you, Romero, for doing a sample ordinance because I kind of wanted to see what it would look like. But I also went ahead and searched for other counties in Washington State that had done this. And I printed out some of their ordinances that they've passed when they passed the home fund because I thought they were kind of important. I think the most, the closest to us is Watcom County. They have a housing advisory committee where they have kind of what we have, where they have their cities and, and that's who they're sending it to. And I thought that was pretty interesting. The ones I have right now are Skagit, Watcom, King and Jefferson County. And just seeing how, how they were able to, to do it, I also reached out to some of the Commissioners from these areas and kind of, you know, talk to them about their process and, and how they, they followed through with this. And, you know, they all went through the councilmatic way for, laid out for the ordinances. And so, um, you know, I just, I don't think we're going to be the first doing this. And, you know, and I feel like other counties are taking advantage of this, trying to solve the huge issue behind us. We're at a place where we're working with all of our cities to have a regional approach. And they're in support of this. So I guess I'll just leave it at that. I was just, and I have the other ordinances if anyone else wants to, to look at them.
I pulled Olympia's to see what was in there. And it's really, there really is. And I pulled the 1590, the revised statute, just to see what the side rails are. And the side rails for the spending of the money is very prescribed. And it's good. It's, it hits what we need and, but yet it's, it's got the flexibility, but yet the, the target that you'd want to see. There really wasn't much in there at all about process. So this whole idea about who to size and have an advisory, I thought there might be stuff, because I knew Olympia had an advisory council. So I was thinking maybe the statute requires you to have advisory council and stuff. And none of that's really in there. Olympia did that through a, through a work plan. They put, they put a stakeholder group together after they put on the ballot and kind of created an implementation plan of sorts. And they put that in there. That's good, but it's not in there. It's kind of up to us in terms of this process. Yeah, I mean, to me, this is a unique issue. You know, the Challenge Seattle Group led by former Governor Greg Ward did a whole bunch of new polling. And, you know, 92% of Washington voters say homelessness and lack of portable housing are, is a critical issue Washington State government should address. I did a bunch of doorbelling in this last campaign cycle for various candidates. And it's basically the number one issue in every part of the community. I was mainly doorbelling in Lacey, but it was, I know I spoke to the candidates in Olympia. It's a number one issue. So I don't really have a, it's not like, for example, our courthouse thing where we were sort of like, does the public support it? We don't really know. I mean, we're insiders. We, we're here every day. But it was really not clear to me what the public thought about something like that. Whereas this, I, I don't have any doubt about the commitment of Thurston County voters to want to address this. And what the statute targets is not, I had a meeting with the Chamber, for example. And we were talking about Chamber leadership and about the home fund. And we were talking about the philosophical idea of, and this kind of goes to Gary's point about the, it being ongoing. It's like, well, we're in an emergency regarding homelessness. Do we want to, are we going to say that this is an emergency, will never end and that we'll never get on top of this problem? But this, these dollars, but that's homeless. I, I agree that I want to be out of the business of homeless response as fast as possible. But I think a healthy, thriving community will have permanent supportive housing because there are people with those needs and those people are going to need that kind of housing. I don't see having ongoing permanent supportive housing as a symptom of an emergency or a problem or a, or a, something wrong with your community. But the market, economic forces don't do a good job of building that type of housing and, and being able to support it. Because you're dealing with folks who don't have the resources, you know, so. So to me, I see this as a different stream of support for something that the community needs and the market's not going to provide. If we were raising money to clean up homeless camps, I, that, then that, to me, that argument then would make a lot of sense. Like I don't, we don't need an ongoing permanent tax to clean up homeless camps. I'm hoping that we change our, we get to a point where we don't need to do that. But this is to support, this can not only support permanent supportive housing, but 40% can go toward mental health. And those are needs that I don't think are going to be.
I guess I, I can't argue, sir, with your analysis of the needs. The need is there, no doubt about it. My concern is that if, if we are sure that the public supports this and we're going to go on forever, the difference of the few months doesn't really matter, is the way I'm looking at it. And then the voters can have their say. And then we're truly. And then the voters can have their say, and then we're truly given a mandate, I guess. And I think mandates are easier to follow when the public supports something, that's kind of where I'm coming from on that issue. From the perspective of helping our citizens that are struggling, I want to do that as well. My concern is that as we become more benevolent, and maybe other jurisdictions are not, we end up as a magnet to draw more people with more problems to our community to deal with. And right now, I have very close contacts with the law enforcement community and the fire medic community. I sit on fire, on the medic board, and I've got a history with the law enforcement community. And I know some time back, I tried to get the questions changed on the HUD point in time survey that we do annually, at least, most jurisdictions do that annually, I see some are not doing it anymore for, I don't know why. And what ends up coming out of that is there is no assurance when individuals are asked, where are you from? South County, Puget Sound, any number of jurisdictions in close proximity to our location. But the reality is, when we have a very serious police interaction, or a very serious medical interaction, we then find out that those individuals are mostly from elsewhere in the country, not here locally in our region. People are coming here because there's a lot of good folks in this community that want to do a lot of good things and help people. If we have no restrictions about residency requirements, for an example, and, you know, that could be debated, are you a resident? If you're here a week versus a year versus five years, I don't know, to get a fishing license, you got to be here for a year. To vote, I think you can be here a few days, so what is a resident, really? But where those individuals have come from and when they've came is a big piece of the problem, in my estimation. And if we have no restrictions in place, I just don't see that we'll ever get ahead of the problem, and it's very much like a lifeboat. When there's a disaster at sea and there's a lifeboat, there's only so much room in the lifeboat, and if you overload the lifeboat, the lifeboat sinks, and we didn't do any good. So, that's kind of why I'm where I'm at on this issue. So, I don't know if there's a possibility that we could put in this type of an ordinance that maybe would lay out certain criteria that the community could make adjustments to. If they saw that this wasn't working, maybe we can make an adjustment through the committee that we're talking about putting together. And then, maybe the public would even feel better about it, but better than that, we possibly could have some success. I know there are people out there that need housing, that is a big issue, but I don't think we can house everybody from all around the country, and those jurisdictions that do not enact this are not going to have any capability to do things, it's going to be very easy for them to say, well, they'll go elsewhere, their problem will go elsewhere. Well, where will they go? Well, they'll go to jurisdictions that have made every attempt possible for adequate housing, adequate treatment. So, it's a bigger issue, yes, it's a, it's not the City of Olympia's problem that we're dealing with today, it's a problem throughout the United States. But they're going to keep coming to our location if we are forever benevolent. And therein lies my concern about how we proceed with this, not only in the verbiage of the ordinance, but also seeing if we have a mandate. And I tend to agree with you in regard to this being one of the very top issues of the community, but when they say that, what do they expect to be dealt with? And how do they expect that to be dealt with? And we, as their elected officials, if you will, they want us to do the right thing, there's no two ways about that. But I just think mandates authorized by the voters just give you such a stronger tool to do whatever you're intending to do. So, you know, I'll make it, you know, real simple, the lifeboat. We can't take everybody in, so we're going to have to design our ordinance to be somewhat flexible, if you will, allow for situations that are handled or not handled in different ways throughout the country, and for us to make adequate adjustments to that ordinance. Now, how that might be accomplished, I'm no expert on that. Tom has reviewed a lot of these situations in other portions of the country, and maybe we could put something together, but it's, it's much more complex than just saying we want to help, because I do think everybody wants to help. I don't know anybody out there that doesn't want to do something to solve this problem. And if we place the burden on our taxpayers, and then we don't come up with a solution, and the problem keeps compounding, what have we really done to be successful? And we don't have a very good example, I mean, whether we look at Down by the Lake, or over on Wheeler Street, or right at the exit here on 101 coming in, I mean, it's, only looks like there might be one or two people there right now, but it's already looking like a junkyard. And I can, I just see these locations continuing to spring up as we try to be as benevolent as we possibly can.
That's why we got, that's why the permanent supportive housing is, you know, whether it's buying hotels, I mean, example is, we're working through our ARPA money with Lacey on one, there's a whole group of people working with the state, the state has a surplus, and they're going to make, that's what the Greg Ward thing's all about, is they're going to pitch for this one-time money for acquisition of these, but then we have to manage those, we don't have, we, I don't think it would be responsible for us to acquire a bunch of hotels and have no funding source to run them and create, and manage them and create, and provide case management services. So if we're going to be positioned to do any of that stuff, and we have some real one-time opportunities here, we have a big chunk of our ARPA money that hasn't been allocated for next year, for example, and we've already committed some, we're going to need this. And the, you know, I would point out that out of all the public comment, and I'll just say, I mean, I, I knew there'd be a lot of support in the community for this concept, I just heard enough, and I know there's enough, you know, but I really expected, I really expected to hear a lot of opposition, just because taxes are not popular in general, you usually have someone, but I just didn't hear what I was expecting to hear. We have hundreds of comments. I think, you know, you've raised a concern about the consummatic, I think one of the citizens did, he's sitting in here, but that was the only, I think, nobody came and said, I can only support this if you go to the people with a vote, I mean, that just didn't seem to be the pivot point for the community, and we advertised this everywhere we could, it was two big articles in the newspaper about it, there's, we got a good, and we, you know, it might not have been the 7,000 Miller Slovenia comments, but this has been one of the most, you know, heavily commented upon policy proposals that we've considered in my time on the board, and so, I was really kind of surprised by the very monolithic, I'll call it, nature of support for this. So I just want to point that out, because it's, you know, not everybody's wading through all this comment that we did. Commissioner.
So, for me, I, I heard Erin from, she used to be, she's now a board member at Kehoe Village, but she was one of the residents that was, you know, one of the initial residents at Kehoe Village, and I thought her story was quite powerful, because it kind of demonstrates, you know, when we talk about treatment and support, you know, they have a really good method where, you know, Erin went in there, she had a substance abuse problem, and, you know, while living there, she was able to get clean, she was able to go to school, and now she's, you know, she has a job, and now she's part of the board, you know, that, you know, she was able to move out of Kehoe Village. So, I felt that story was, is extremely powerful, because it kind of demonstrates what you're able to do when you have a permanent supportive housing, and I feel, you know, we have, you know, like, you mentioned Commissioner Mensah, all these projects, we have, you know, the project with Lacey, the Days Inn, we have, you know, a project with Olympia that we just signed an MOU on, and I don't think we'll be really able to help these people unless we have some sort of permanent supportive housing there, we won't be able to, you know, get them out, and, you know, going back to the resident issue of, you know, and I think you touched upon it, Commissioner Edwards, on, you know, is it, you know, what qualifies as a resident, is it a week, is it a year, is it a month? But, you know, I think we just, right, is not only a regional issue, it's a statewide issue, it's a countrywide issue that we're all facing right now, and, but I just don't think we can not do anything, and there was a lot of support that came in, even through the written comments, I was looking at them, and, you know, I think there is a lot of community support for this. And I think people are really wanting a solution, and I don't think we'll get to a solution if we're not proactive and start getting these projects moving along, and, you know, ARPA funds, that one-time funding is great to get the project started, but it won't, you know, these projects won't be able to survive, and we'll be back at square one if we're not able to sustain them over a long-term basis. So, I just, down there.
Commissioner.
You don't have any argument from me about the need, about whether or not this needs to be addressed, it's how it should be addressed, in my estimation. And I would encourage you to talk to law enforcement officers or firefighters that end up responding to these very serious incidences, they respond to a lot of incidences that are not too serious either. But when it is a serious incident, you will find out that the majority of the people they're dealing with are not from here. And I just don't think everywhere around the country has all bad people, so the few that have come here have done all the bad things. I think it is a very good sampling of what we're going to have to figure out how to deal with in the future, that's, and I just don't see, I don't see adequate room in the lifeboat if we don't make proper adjustments to the criteria to get in with the lifeboat.
When you live in the best county in the nation, it's going to be an ongoing problem.
Oh, I, I
People are going to want to be here.
They're going to want to be here for a lot of different reasons, and I just think a tax for, you know, hundreds of millions of dollars that's going to go on forever, that's a few months, hitting the vote of the people.
A point, one point on that is just that, you know, Olympia has passed this, they're paying it.
Yep.
And it would be, we know this is a regional issue, and we recognize that through our Regional Housing Council and our MOU on 1406, and all those different processes that we've gone through, and this is really bringing the rest of the county to that same point of what Olympia's, you know, already contributed. Anyway, so I think it's 9:48, I know we only slated an hour.
For an hour, yes, thank you, good conversation, Commissioners, and I appreciate your individual perspective, so the question stands, and this is for me to receive direction on the next steps. Commissioner was very clear in terms of he understands the need, I think he is understanding also the need to move forward, but as he stated on how, and I believe what he stated the how will be to ask the voters whether they'd like to approve this one tenth of 1% or not. So, I ask Commissioner Mihai and Commissioner Mensah the same questions, and I would like to give your perspective on this.
I'll be clear, I'm willing to proceed on a consummatic basis for this.
So am I. Just with what I saw with the other counties did, who passed this.
The, my, one of the things that I'm going to maybe suggest with that, with that, with that vote, is that on December 17th, there's a three-cities meeting, and the county is hosting that meeting, and with that meeting is, it really was started to kind of align our COVID policies and stuff, but we talk about regional issues, it's the Chair of the Board and the three mayors and the city administrators, and the proposal might be to make the sole agenda item this topic at that meeting to see if we can get, the reason I suggest that's because you have the City of Olympia, City of Tumwater, City of Lacey, and the county in the same place, and with the administrators to maybe talk about what, some of the details of what should be in our ordinance if we were going to.
I will, I will be sending proposed agendas as the county's term to host, unfortunately, you know, you are representative county on that as the Chair, I'm not asking the other Commissioners to sit in there, because there will become a public hearing, a public, open public meeting, so I think what you're stating is just informational.
Well, it is, but I'd like to, you know, I'm kind of looking to my seatmates for that authority to kind of have those discussions, that, because I think
Thank you for clarifying, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, hey, we're dealing with the democratic process here, I realize that, and we do have a problem, so if you are the Chair, you know.
And then we can come back, yeah, and we'll see what we can put in the ordinance that will satisfy.
And we'll come back, yeah, thank you, we'll come back up to the 17th to report to the whole Board as the other meeting went.
Sure.
So I will, usually we have a lot of items to discuss, so I will send a suggestion today to the city managers to just have a single item, opportunity for the mayors and the Chair, and that means first to have a conversation on the next steps of this, now that I have direction, there's going to be a consumatic action.
Because in terms of exploring the possibility with the two cities, I kind of feel like I'm playing a game of telephone in a sense, and I really want Lacey and Olympia to sit to look at each other, and I am here what, that we're on the same page, if that indeed occurs.
So, this ordinance was, again, the result of your direction after the public hearing, there's a lot of cleanup, we heard from a citizen this morning, we'll review the ordinance, there's a lot of cleanup that needs to be clarified, so I will start working on that, and also I will start working on a little more specifics. Here, it states the recommendations will be through the Regional Housing Council, I will add additional language to determine how the, that recommendation will come to the Board and how the Board will vote on that. I will also add additional actions for your consideration in this ordinance to direct me to start working with the City of Olympia on a little clearer room there will be for regional pooling of the home funds. I will also add in here, this, and this is what I'm hearing. I will also add in here, this, and this is what I'm hearing. Um, the, uh, also the, the administrative side of, of the Regional Housing Council, the home funds. I think it's just timely to have an individual to focus on, on providing what I call the administrative executive support to the Regional Housing Council. They can solely be dedicated to manage some of the elements of this. Obviously with the, the help of our, of our staff and public health, but I think we need to look for an structure. So I will try to add language to that as well.
Just to, just to support that, if, that was very much a Lacey, um, concern. I mean, they, if the Regional Housing Council was going to be the body and they, and they very much supported that, they would want us to kind of talk about how to increase capacity and, and just what you said there. I just wanted to say that was a big talking point for the Lacey folks I talked to.
And also, also what I'm hearing, um, and based on this conversation, uh, some sort of accountability. And I believe, uh, it, it will be, uh, I will draft some language. They will add that it has to be an annual report. It will be, uh, bring to the board as to the success or not. And that, uh, it will be an opportunity to, for the board to provide direction or change the direction, if, if that is not what the intent of this is. I will add that a little bit of, uh, of, um, in terms of annual reporting and accountability language. And that's what I'm hearing based on the conversation. Anything else that, and this just points that I'd like to add.
I, I would like to.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Go ahead. Uh, you said something that piqued my interest and that is that whether we wanted to continue this or not, or something to that regard, if, if we didn't have success, basically, maybe, I'm adjusting your words some. Uh, do you know if we did not have success, is a councilmatic tax revocable by the council? Should things not be going properly?
Any action that you take can be revoked by the same votes. But also I was, I was reacting to the initial comment that you stated, uh, the, with community input, is there an opportunity to change the criteria?
Yeah, 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 thank you very much.
So, and, and that is, I, I was alluded to the fact then, the way as to how we can, the board can get to that point, whether that can, a criteria needed to be changed is through an annual report and accountability. I guess that's probably.
It's kind of an interesting.
Response to your comment.
Kind of an interesting question that you just raised that I don't think I've ever really thought about. Like if the, if we did, if a tax, this or any other tax, frankly, let's just talk about this one. If it went to the vote of the people and the voters approved it, the board can't just undo it, right? I mean, we'd have to.
I would think not.
It, it really is permanent at that point. Whereas by councilmatic action, in a sense, it's more, it, it, it's more flexible in the sense that the board go, no, the process is not working. We don't need any more terms for that.
In the process, you do have that option, obviously, but also you need to consider because this particular funding allows for bonding. So if, if a bond is part of the strategy in the long term, then if the board decides to rescind this taxation.
Better figure a way to cover the bond.
Yeah, it needs to be discussed about the value. So it's, it's all the dynamics, but the bottom line is yes. Uh, through a legislative action that you take, that you may take today, you can undo it later on.
Or a board could say, we're ending this in three years, once this bond appears.
If, if bonds, yeah, bonding will tighten it up if you choose to do that.
I have a question, just in this kind of turn. Um, is the possibility that, let's say, we were to pass it as a councilmatic, but then kind of put it out to the voters, but that way it's already collecting? Is that a possibility? And just say, you know, do you?
I'm sorry, I don't understand the question.
So basically pass it as councilmatic, but then also.
Have them affirm.
Have them affirm it. That way it's, is that also a possibility?
You could do an advisory vote. An advisory.
But it wouldn't, but it wouldn't.
It wouldn't tie your.
Ties.
Yeah, yeah, wouldn't remind you.
Yeah, you could, you could have that, but also, you know, if, if, if that is the desire of the board, then why go through the process of taking a councilmatic action? If you intend to ask the voters.
Uh, could I bring up just a quick topic for maybe discussion next week? Because we don't have time and we haven't allocated time for this particular topic. And, uh, we received comment from, we've received several pieces of comment from the same, uh, county employee that is asking us to rethink our resolution on the virus issue based on what is happening in several courts around the country over the last couple of weeks. And I'd just like to be able to discuss that at, uh, our meeting next week, maybe on Tuesday. Put it on the agenda or something. Is that okay so we can respond to that employee's concerns?
I did respond this morning. But, I mean, we can.
You can, you can probably have that conversation.
Sure, I mean, and, and it'll give us actually more time because we're in an ever-evolving situation here. And, uh, we have three more, three or four more days, you know. We'll see what happens in those three or four more days. But, uh, we've had challenges to the president's mandates and, and it seems that the courts are sustaining the challenge. And that's kind of what I want to discuss. Can we put something on, on a temporary hold or something like that for the sake of the employees? Okay.
Back to the topic of this morning. I have an answer about the effective dates, the possible effective dates. So, um, according to Department of Revenue, a new sales tax or a change in a sales tax that is not tied to the six and a half percent state rate, which is what we changed the last time, um, can only take effect with at least seventy-five calendar days notice to Department of Revenue. And they are only making the changes effective on January one, April one, and July one. No October option. So for the tax to take effect on April first, we would have to notify Department of Revenue no later than January sixteenth. So I don't think that that's a possibility. Um, so if we notified DOR no later than April seventeen, the tax would take effect on July first and the county would actually see revenue come in in September. Because it comes on a two-month lag. There you go.
Yeah, okay. That's what we need to know, and you?